Okay. Do you want to give me? Go on the three o'clock city council meeting to order. Councilman Fleury will give us a pledge and then Councilman Corbin will follow up with the, I mean, excuse, Councilman Fleury will give us an invocation. Councilman Corbin will give us a pledge.
Letters, pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today with a thankful heart, thanking you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. Thank you for this great city, the citizens, Lord. We pray as we celebrate the Thanksgiving season. We lift up your holy name. We ask that you forgive us of our sins. Give us wisdom and knowledge, oh Father, we do pray. We pray for the city employees. We pray for the administration. Ask that you give them guidance and wisdom. Now go and guide this meeting, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Bradford. Councilman Everson.
Yeah, here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman Fleury is present.
Councilwoman Lynch.
She is. Here's someone.
Councilwoman Lynch is here somewhere.
We saw her. She's in the back.
Looking for an approval of the minutes.
I will make a motion, Mr. Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay. So, motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilman Everson to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and city council meetings on October 22nd and 23rd. All in favor? Please vote. That would be four yeses. That passes. Words recognitions of this distinguished guest communications of the mayor ultimately, but we'll start with city council members.
Just want to say hello to everybody that came out to the meeting today. See a few former Neighborhood Association presidents who are still very active in many other things and just thank everybody for coming out.
Okay. I have one, actually a great weekend, one thing about this community is we do a great job about celebrating veterans and Veterans Day. We had many activities, a lot of churches had separate events, obviously the huge Veterans Day parade. A lot of folks came out despite the weather, which was not necessarily ideal for Louisiana parade, rather. So, just one thing, you know, as a veteran, I appreciate it, but I think it's a great reflection of our community that this city parish area really honors veterans at this time of year, so I appreciate that personally. Councilman Bradford, did you have any communications?
I do not, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Over to you, Brian, if you have anything from the administration.
The mayor may have something when she comes in, if you'll give her that liberty. She's just running a few minutes late dealing with some media issues.
Okay, no problem. Any other communications relative to city business? Brian?
No.
No? Okay.
Mayor just walked in.
There are your comments, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
She's right on cue.
She's right on cue. You can take a breath first, we're not going to make you.
I know. We were, we got sidetracked in the hallway. So, thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. We have several announcements for today. Earlier today, just a few minutes ago, actually, and I did send something to council as quickly as I could, announced that Chief Administrative Assistant Men Raymond will assume the position as substitute chief of the Shreveport Police Department upon the medical leave of Chief Allen Crump. Chief Crump submitted paperwork to Mayor Tyler, to me, today immediately, placing him on medical leave. Chief Raymond has nearly nineteen years of service with the Shreveport Police Department, serving in roles that include special response team member, narcotics agent, police officer and academy instructor. In addition to that, of course, he served in every division of the Shreveport Police Department. Second announcement, yesterday, we observed Veterans Day and I'd want, and I'd like to just wish all those who served in our armed forces a happy Veterans Day and thank you for your service. I'd also like to recognize this week, November 12th through 16th, as National Apprenticeship Week, and we have a proclamation that we're doing for the national level. At 10:00 AM Friday, we will welcome new cadets to the Shreveport Police Department at the seventh and ninth basic law enforcement training commencement. All are invited to attend this ceremony, which will be held at the Louisiana State Museum on Greenwood Road. The citywide holiday celebration will kick off at 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 20th, at Riverview Park. We will have the lighting of our forty-foot decorated tree in addition to other holiday lighting all along the park. There will be entertainment, food, music, arts and craft vendors, and the list goes on. We are excited and we're asking everyone to join us in this festive occasion. I'm proud to announce that the city of Shreveport received the Grantee Award of Excellence from the Federal Transit Administration. It has been a year since we've opened the new Sportran terminal, and in celebration, we will have Customer Appreciation Day from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM this Friday, November 16th. Free snacks and fun activities will be provided. Also on Fridays, Sportran will kick off its Stuff the Bus campaign, collecting canned goods for the Food Bank of Northwest Louisiana and Toys for Children at the Providence House. That drive will be held from November 16th through December 21st. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. Since we met last, the city has sponsored several events, including, but not all, State Fair of Louisiana ended this Sunday, Pumpkin Shine Online at Betty, Virginia Park, Spar Community Centers hosted Halloween parties. We want to say thank you to all of those who have come out to enjoy those festivities and be a part of the many activities we have here in Shreveport. Those are the announcements, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilwoman Lynch?
Woman. Councilwoman Lynch.
Didn't say it.
You said councilwoman.
Sorry.
So, look at the front cover of GQ magazine this month, Serena on it. It's Woman of the Year. But I was really not going to say a whole lot today, but since I'm starting my ascent from public life, public office, but I've gotten a lot of calls and response, Mayor, to the situation with Chief Crump. So, is the new person here?
Yes.
What, let me, let me, let me look, see.
Chief Raymond, will you please come forward? Yeah, he was out in the hallway with me, being detained.
I noticed the good-looking man standing next to you, but I didn't, I didn't know who he was.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Alrighty. Chief Men Raymond.
Okay, Mr. Raymond, I know that, she said you've been on the force nineteen years?
I will complete nineteen in February.
Oh, okay. Mayor, do you mind if we get a little more information on it?
We can certainly, we will certainly provide you with a Vida as soon as we get back into the office, and it'll probably be in the morning before I can get it to you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Alrighty, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Best wishes to you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes, yes, sir.
My understanding was it was going to be a retirement, it changed to a leave, medical leave?
Yes, sir. I sent you all something, I don't know if you got the email.
I did not.
I did explain, I tried to explain in that email, if you'll read it. I received notification yesterday while I was sitting in council on an email that he had changed from retirement to medical leave.
I see.
And so, after that, I asked for documentation from the doctor, because as I said to you all yesterday, I still hadn't received anything in writing. But I did get something yesterday via email, and, and so, I waited until he could get me something. He sent it in this morning to my office from the, from his doctors. And there's a form that he has to fill out, the doctor has to fill out. And so, after that, then, I started looking within a department and looking at top-level officers to see who we could put in and who would be willing to step up at this time, someone who had the experience, someone who had the confidence of the, not only his coworkers, but people in this community. And so, we came up with Chief Raymond.
Great. So, so, in regards to, and I'm not sure if you can answer, that the length of a leave of this sort, was it, 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 it sort of, sort of, in your opinion, required that you would do a interim at this point?
Well, let me tell you what civil service law says, and I'm going to ask, of course, I see the attorney to chime in. When a position, when the chief's position is vacant, you do an interim. But when the chief position is not vacant, if they're just absent or on medical leave, the law says, civil service law says, you have to do a substitute police chief.
A substitute chief.
Yes, sir. Can you, would you like to chime in?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Under civil service rules, when there is a substitute police chief, they exercise all the proper authority of the police chief, they are in effect the police chief. They're entitled, civil service members are entitled three hundred and sixty-four days of sick leave under the civil service rules, and if there is an approved extended leave, in this case, medical leave, then the mayor is, the appropriate action is for her to appoint a substitute chief. If there's vacancy, like the mayor said, then you would appoint an interim. So, there's a slight difference, but Mr. Raymond, Chief Raymond has all of the powers and authority, he is the police chief.
Okay. And the, and the, and the substitute status lasts how long?
It lasts for thirty days, and then by extension of the civil service board can be extended as needed to be commensurate with the leave of the vacant, or the temporarily unfilled position.
Okay.
Or the position of the individual on leave, excuse me.
Right. Well, you had to act properly, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let me clarify. Is a substitute chief of police, not an interim?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there is a difference.
There's not like a substitute teacher?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No. He has, he has the full authority, he is the police chief.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay. I do, I do, obviously, you know, there was a couple of homicides yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
Last night. One in my district. And I guess my question is, I know we have a plan in place, you know, to address the spike in crime. So, is the Chief Raymond going to continue that plan, or will it be reevaluated? Do we know that? At this point, I know it's all kind of new.
Absolutely. I would, I would have to, you know, defer to him. I know that he knows what's going on, because he's been there for a long time. He's been, he's worked at every level, but he would need to actually respond to that. Would you like for him to do that at this time?
Yes.
Chief Raymond?
Councilwoman, certainly, I'm aware of the operations we have been running and those that are, that are on the horizon due to some of the crime issues we've had. I can tell you that I'm going to reevaluate everything that we've done. This obviously is a new appointment to me as well. I believe in proactive policing. I come from a proactive policing background, meaning that I worked in specialized divisions where we did not respond to crimes, or calls for service. We went out and tried to prevent those crimes from occurring in the first place, and so I plan to bring that personality to this position. And so, I'm certainly going to look at some of the ways that we can address some of the spikes in crime that we've seen. I'm going to look at some of our specialized units, and I understand the reason they were created, and make sure that they're still operating in the manner that I believe they should, they're on the streets when some of these crimes are occurring, and that they are taking the appropriate enforcement actions to try to reduce these crimes.
Okay. So, you, you do recognize that some people feel that what we're doing or have been doing may not be, it's not working.
Creating the result we would like to see.
That's good.
I do, and I understand, you know, very much so that perception is reality, which means I understand that some, that people are getting tired to some degree of seeing that our crime stats have been lower as compared to last year, and I know Chief Gooden has said it, and Chief Crump has said it, that if you're affected by crime, you don't want to hear that there's been a reduction in crime, and I understand that. So, I'm well aware of some of the issues from the citizens and some of the things that they would like to see the police department to address, and I really kind of hope to get back to the, the boots-on-the-ground police work and looking to work very closely with officers that I am now going to be leading, and lead by example.
Okay. Now, what, I, I just need a little something, what's, did you, are you from Shreveport?
I grew up in the area. I actually grew up in Blanchard, but I've, I've lived in, in Shreveport my entire life with the exception of attending college in Monroe.
Okay. ULM?
I've lived in the area.
ULM?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, I graduated from Northeast.
Northeast, right.
I was the last graduating class.
I get that.
Trick question.
It was a trick question.
Well, I mean, I graduated from USL and now it's University of Louisiana at Lafayette, so I, I, I get that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Certainly.
And if I recall, now Acting Chief Raymond, now, I remember you did pretty good on that police chief test a few years ago, if I, if I remember right.
I did.
You may have had the highest score.
Yes, sir.
I thought I recalled that. Oh, we saw he was a bright guy.
Thank you.
And, and I know you got to formulate your, your own identity and strategy, but there's, there's been constant conversation regarding the, the force, in regards to how many, on the force, how many are actually out in the, in the area. Is that something you're going to evaluate as well?
Certainly. And I'm well aware of those numbers due to my position as the chief administrative assistant. But I actually, earlier today, when I was approached about this position, I pulled rosters of all our personnel and where they're assigned, both those assigned Uniformed Services Division and Investigative Division, and I'm going to take a closer look and make sure that we have our personnel allocated in the best locations. I understand that we are all patrol officers at heart. We were hired to do the job patrol officer and actually be out there responding to calls for service. We have the ability to have specialized units to assist with those calls, but I'm going to make sure that we have an adequate number of people on the streets in marked police units available to, to assist the citizens as needed.
So, you feel at this point that it's, it's some, some, some repurposing of some officers going to happen?
I feel like I'm going, I'm going to evaluate it, and I'm going to certainly look and see, you know, what, what positions might, can we move, or can we transition away from them? And I'll say this about the, because I've, I've obviously heard the comments, I've been in administrative division now for over a year. When we talk about officers behind desks versus officers in the streets, you know, for fourteen years that I worked in the Narcotics Division, I had a desk, and most days, I spent time at that desk typing reports and writing search warrants and taking care of evidence, but I spent a large majority of my time on the street, wasn't responding to calls for service, but, but I did have a desk. All our investigators, they have desks, and so, I, I don't know if there might not be a complete understanding, or maybe I don't have a complete understanding of what we refer to as a desk job. But I'm certainly going to look at those people that do spend the majority of their day behind desks and see if we can reallocate those job tasks to other personnel and get some more people back in the patrol cars, which is, I know what, what people want to see, they want to see officers in uniform on the streets.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate your responses, but I do want you to understand also the unseen, okay? We, we see that, we see the homicides, we see the shootings, we see all those things that are reported on the news, but I get flooded with constituents who said my, my cars and my homes are getting burglarized nightly. That's, that's an issue, Chief, that, that has to be addressed as well.
It is, and that's the issue, I think, we, we can address.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief Raymond, I want to congratulate you, but I also want to say that the citizens have told me, I just finished the campaign for reelection, walking door-to-door, people want to see patrol cars in the neighborhood, and when they see them, they would like for them to speak to them in a courtesy way, courtesy way. They're not doing that. They need a little bit more on Dale Carnegie. So, just keep that in mind as you put this plan and review it going forward, and best of luck to you.
Thank you, Councilman Fleury.
Absolutely. Well done on the first baptism by fire. And God's feet, but we, we all wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Raymond. If I may, Mr. Chair, I, I too want to say how grateful I am to Chief Raymond for having the courage to step up at a time when we are undergoing high rate of crime, and he has that heart and he has that, that soul and that determination, that care for the citizens. So, I want to publicly say how much I appreciate him. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other communications relative to city business, Mayor Tyler?
That is it, thank you so much.
Okay. Anybody have anything for Mr. Green? Doesn't sound like it, thank you. Security bond forfeiture report, I did see it from city attorney, so thank you for that. Public hearing, correct, Art?
Mr. Chairman, we have several public hearings. The first one, you may want to call to order is on resolution number 118 of 2018. It's a resolution stating the city of Shreveport endorsement of the NITH LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program, and I believe that Community Development will have a presentation.
Okay, we will open that public hearing, and I can see Community Development walking right down.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Vice Chairman, council members, mayor. Before the council today is a public hearing in the Restoration Tax Abatement application of Niche LLC. The building to be restored is located at 1110 Sam R. Fertitta Drive in Shreveport. This building, before the restoration, which is at this point ninety-five percent complete, the building had been vacant for over thirty years and was under demolition order from the property standards board. It has since been declared a historically significant building by the Louisiana Division of Historic Preservation. Originally built as Evergreen Baptist Church in 1925, it housed various businesses since that time up until 1987, when it became vacant and has deteriorated since that time. Niche LLC will invest six hundred and thirty thousand dollars into the building, and we're going to put on a, a video showing the pictures of the building that's on a loop for you to take a look at today. The aver- law taxes abated by the city are three thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and five cents per year for a total of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and twenty-five cents over the five-year abatement period, and those pictures are being shown here. Basically, the before and after of the building, which has been given significant improvement since the building began, and again, it's ninety-five percent complete. Niche has indicated that as a result of the restoration of the building and moving the headquarters of Thrash Construction Services there, three new jobs will be created with a payroll increase of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. The new positions created includes project manager, administrative assistant, and superintendent. And today, we have Mr. Donald Niche here, who's from the company, and he's prepared to answer any questions you may have of him concerning the project come up.
Do any of the council members have any question for Community Development or the, Mr. Niche?
Well, I'll just make a comment, if that's appropriate at this time, and just say how glad I am to see this project happen where it has. I mean, this is a building that, right smack in the middle of my district and, you know, pass it a lot, have seen the need for investment there a lot, and had often wondered, what could we ever do to get somebody to be able to, you know, see the, the potential of this place, and lo and behold, without doing anything, these guys figured it out and came in and have really, you know, done an excellent job, and they, and this company has somewhat of a history of doing drastic rehabs that have worked out well. So, this is another one to add to their, to their book of success and well worth the participation in this program. This is exactly what this program was designed to encourage, and this is exactly what I like to see out of participants in this program. So, really glad to see this major, major change at a somewhat noticeable part of our city. So, thanks, thanks to all that worked on this, and, and I would ask everybody else to, to support this today.
Councilman Fleury?
I wouldn't let you get away without giving you a pitch. Southern Hills has a fire station that was originally the Summer Grove Town Hall, and it's going to be advertised, I understand, for bid, so I, I just want you to know about that. You might want to drive by and look at it, it's a great piece of property.
What's the address?
Mayor, what's the address of that fire station? Southland Park Drive, right next to the State Farm, Agent.
It's Southland Park. The chief can give us the exact address.
The old town hall for Summer Grove before they came into the city of Shreveport has a great historical value.
It does.
Any, any other council members?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask, later, but I could ask, now, the value of this abatement is, how, how do we project this? Can anybody answer that?
It's a little over three thousand.
How much?
Three thousand a year.
Three thousand? Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further comments for this group, then I'll open it up to the floor. Does any member of the public want to speak for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, the next public hearing is on ordinance number eighty-seven of 2018. It demands various articles and sections of the Louisiana, Shreveport's United Development Code. I believe that the MPC, perhaps Mr. Bailey, and/or the Office of the City Attorney may have some comments.
Okay. Alan, if you'll come up?
I'm sorry, the boss is coming up.
Yes, I mean, poor Adam never gets a chance.
I don't know if Alan took the direct route today.
I decided that was too long of a route yesterday.
I thought you were just counting steps yesterday.
Yes, sir. At, Mr. Vice Chair and the council at the, I think it was November 7th, meeting of the Metropolitan Planning Commission, we brought this ordinance before the commission in a public hearing setting. The commission listened to all of the different, assistance of the, the ordinance and moved it forward for your adoption. To assist you, since he and the city attorney, Ms. Karen Strand, have been working diligently on this ordinance, I've asked Adam Bailey from my office to come and answer any technical questions you may have.
Okay. Do any of the council members have any technical questions?
While Adam's on, while Adam's on his way up, I'll just remind everybody, this is just, you know, this is essentially adding to the, you know, adding to the, to the maps, the overlay district that already exists to regulate this historic properties. This is not, you know, creating new areas to be regulated, this is, you know, because there is a process for people who want to be added into a historic district, but this that's being added now is the currently existing ones. So, Adam, if you have anything?
No, you pretty much said everything that I would have said.
Okay. And, and I do want to thank you and Karen, whoever provided this document, we do have a little handout in front of us that does explain these different pieces of legislation in case anyone, you know, that's, that's, I believe that Adam produced that, and so I want to thank him for making that clear, so that in case anybody has any questions about these various pieces, there's a, it kind of answers that.
Okay. Any other council members?
No, I was, I was, I have the opportunity to say what he wants to say, but you have, you have no additional information, Chair?
No, sir.
You can only ask technical questions.
Technical.
Okay. At this point, we do have one member of the public that would like to speak on this, so I'm going to call up Mr. Arsenault. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tom Arsenault. I live at 536 Jordan Street in the heart of the Highland Historic District in 7110- I live at 536 Jordan Street in the heart of the Highland Historic District in 71101. I'm here to speak in favor of this. It's a really long time in coming. The greatest person that has really contributed to trying to make these things happen is my sweet wife, who's right over here, Elizabeth, and our friend from South Africa, Lisa Von Bake, and she came to observe American democracy in action before she heads back to Johannesburg tomorrow. This is a very important thing that we are doing and that I hope that you are doing. And I've talked to lots of you over a lot of different years. It's really time to do this. I really thank Councilman Everson for his work on this. I especially thank Ms. Strand and Mr. Bailey. I think that they came up with some ideas that helped us move the process forward and move this forward. So, I really urge you, please, today to vote for this ordinance, and then you have a couple that will be before you in a couple of weeks, and rather than me come back up here again, I'll just ask you, please, to vote for those the next time. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Just, the only thing for me is just to appreciate your support of, you know, helping move our city forward, both in planning, historic preparation, and all your myriad of other boards and other things you serve on in this city, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I will say, Mr. Chairman, that if you haven't gone to the link that gets to the Highland, really the manual for all the architecture Elizabeth spent, and she had a committee, but it was mostly Elizabeth, and put a huge amount of work. So, if somebody has a property that's historic, and really, it would be true for Highland, South Highlands, and Fairfield in particular, it's really a manual for this is what it looked like, this is when it was developed, and these are the kinds of things that you can do to preserve the historic character of your home. It really is a wonderful piece of work, and I will tell you that usually cities would pay tens of thousands of dollars for that work product. This city paid zero.
And really, I was going to add, you know, the variety of styles that exist in Highland make that document really applicable to even some of our older neighborhoods like Allendale, you know, Queensborough, you know, really, really any of those neighborhoods that were in the early part of Shreveport's history, it really applies to all of them because it has such a wide variety of styles that are referenced and described in there. So, it's an incredibly helpful document on, even if somebody is just interested in seeing, you know, you may have seen some feature on a building for a long time, you don't know what that's called, like, it'll help you figure it all out, and it's kind of a neat way to just learn Shreveport, you know? It's neat to kind of know the proper terminology to talk about.
I'm a mouthpiece today, but the real work is being done by this wonderful blond lady over here.
Well, maybe next time we'll have her come up and speak. Hey, because I know you like that microphone, so we want to get equal ban out there.
I can't take it with me, can I, Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, I'll do the honor of asking Ms. Elizabeth to come up, because, Tom, you definitely married up.
Yes, ma'am, that's absolutely true.
And we appreciate her as well.
I'm the shorter one in the family. Yes, ma'am.
Just tell us about.
Well, I wanted to thank you also for the opportunity. I believe our mayor, Ollie Tyler, also was part of this, and I was very honored to be a part of this historic planning commission, and I learned a lot about it. I learned by researching and studying it even more than, I grew up in 536 Jordan Street my whole life, born and raised there. And so, it was, the more I studied it, the more I fell in love with my area. And it was not just Highland, but it was the other districts as well, that we were really a family. And so, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity.
So, give us where the link is again, the link that we can...
I believe it's on, tell me again, I think it's under Highland Administration Association.
Actually, I think you can get to it from the Shreveport Historic Preservation Commission website. There's a, there's a link.
And it's in our legislation as well.
Yeah, I just want to make, for the public that may want to. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Does any other member of the public want to speak for or against the ordinance? If not, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm happy to hand it over. He's red.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, before you do that...
Okay.
There are some people in the audience that I do need to recognize.
Okay.
We've been working diligently, of course, with our mayor's advisory council for persons with disabilities, and I want them to raise their hand today. We're trying to re-energize that council. Certainly, we, you know, have done a lot of things with them, but we're trying to do some even better and greater things with them. So, they're here today, and I wanted to recognize them. Mr. Murphy is here to my right. Are there any other members? Okay. But Mr. Murphy is one of those who, you know, emails us every week to make sure that we're on top of what needs to happen with persons with disabilities, but I want to thank him for being here with us today. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
And then, perfect segue for budget ordinances. I must, is it y'all's office that's presenting the budget ordinances or over here?
It's the public hearing for budgets.
We have a public hearing today, and I believe that the CIO has a comment concerning it as soon as the public hearing is open.
Correct. The administration made the public presentation on October the 23rd, previous council meeting. The public hearings are this week for the council and the public. We encourage all to attend. Friday's meeting starts at 3:00 and runs till about 5:00 in the second-floor conference room of City Hall, and then 8:00 early Saturday morning till 3:00. And hopefully, we'll complete all the budgets at that time. If not, we'll start at 2:00 on Sunday.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, if, are you scheduling all the departments for that evening? I mean, you're saying if we don't finish, we'll continue the next day?
Correct. We have a certain number that has been scheduled by the council, Ms. White, for Friday. We're going to try and get the rest of those in on Saturday, but then if we don't, because of time constraints, we will finish those up on Sunday.
But those that will be continued on Sunday, will be there on Saturday?
They'll be there on Saturday, and if we get to them, we'll get to them, and we'll be done. If we don't, we'll finish them up on Sunday. But the pleasure of the administration is to finish them all on Saturday.
That's the pleasure of the council.
That's the pleasure of the council, too. We're in agreement then.
Okay. I'm just saying, if we had to extend...
We can.
We can.
Yes, sir. And the budgets are available online. If the public would like to go view them, just go to shreveportla.gov. They can pull up the summary as well as the complete capital and operational budgets so they can be prepared when they come to the meeting.
Perfect. Okay, so then, from a formality perspective, I am going to call the public hearing on the 2019 budget ordinances is called to order. We've heard from the administration. Does anybody or any member of the public want to speak for or against this particular ordinance? Ken Craft, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, mayor. Ken Craft, 157 Archer Avenue, 71105. Other than Art, I think I've attended more budget hearings. This budget, I just want to give a quick thank you to Chief Crawford, Sharika, all the budget coordinators. They deserve a pat on the back. It's difficult when sometimes the figures handed down seem to come from the Grinch, but, you know, when you get Grinchy numbers, you do the best you can. I like the budgets overall. There's a few things I just want to point out that are intriguing, if nothing else, in the debt service. The bonded, geo-bonded debt ratio is the lowest it's been in forever, twenty-something years. It's really low as a percentage, about 6.7. That means we're in a strong position. We don't need $350 million cap projects. Probably, we only need a fourth of that because we don't have sewer like we did back in 2011. We don't have the EPA, DOJ, Grinch hanging over our necks. But certainly, I encourage, again, the next council, the next mayor, to look seriously at capital projects. It's not per se needed immediately, but the old infrastructure can, gets rustier. In the general fund, and Sharika, I still haven't found more than those two glitches. That's why I haven't sent you any more, but other than Audrey Lane misspelled and an E needed on a past tense, it's a pretty thoroughly well-prepared document, maybe. That's why we get annually an award from the budget folks, just like we do from the finance folks. The sales tax, thank goodness, that's not a Grinch. It's been coming in strong. It's really doing well. Social Security's given 2.8 in January. That's cost of living increase. Twelve dollars a month for me, wow, and a dollar for my wife. But if sales are up and the cost of living's up, sales taxes should be up. We're not about to sell any geo-bonds, so we don't need to, but if y'all had a mind, you could add a half a percent debit and credit, you could increase sales taxes by half a percent, and that the operating budget reserve could go up by a like amount. Not necessary. We certainly like to budget revenues conservatively. That's proper budgeting. And the other two things about the budget are that it's such an important part of what you guys do, and Stephanie, we will have a woman because District B, one or the other, kind of be like when I was faced with a choice for US Senate in '02 between Mary and Suzie, you know, I'm joking, of course, but the final thing about the budget is the hearings this week. I encourage our friends in the news media, they might want to show Friday or Saturday, but I guess they don't because everything goes so well and is run so smoothly by the administration and the department heads, and if we could promise them Vistacuffs or arm-wrestling between Michael and Oliver, maybe they'd show, but they seem somewhat disinterested unless there's controversy, and budgets tend to be dull. And it's only after the hearing and after the December 11th ordinances were adopted that, starting in January, people start calling this lady and saying, "I want such and such more for parks or streets," but they just don't seem to show when it counts, which is now. They show when it's too late. Why, I don't know. Finally, Oliver, you can go metric if you want, because when you're driving 112 on I-49, it's really cool and you're not speeding, and you got a dollar bet on Army and Navy. Will you take it?
We're on. We're on. Don't worry. I may have to double up this here. Okay. I know. Any other public comments against the proposed budget ordinances? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. Ready to turn it over to you, Mr. Chair, if you want. I may still finishing up. I'll ask for my last thing. Mr. Thompson, is there anything to be added to the legislation, any legislation to be added today?
We have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, with that being said, since we're back on script, we are under consent agenda legislation. Public comments? Oh, sorry. Good point. I thought they were all relative to the others, but nope. Mr. Michael Freeman, please. And, Mr. Freeman, if you would, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Michael Freeman, 719 Edwards Street, apartment 211, here in Shreveport. I'm the Wellness Center Coordinator at the Philadelphia Center. The last council meeting that I was at, I heard a lot about how the city is wanting our citizens, you know, to think safe as it pertains to fire safety with heaters and then with National Night Out, you know, with making our neighborhood safe. For you, our city government, I know that making Shreveport and keeping it safe is your top priority, because who moves to an unsafe city? What business wants to come and build, you know, in a city that's not safe? Part of making the city safe relates to public health, and with the many things involved in public health comes preventing the spread of infectious diseases or harm reduction, and that's what the needle exchange will do. By having sterile needles, it gives those with that type of addiction the tools necessary from getting infected with HIV and/or hepatitis C. It also provides a method of getting used needles off the street, out of trash cans, out of our driveways, and out of parking lots, which in turn helps your citizens and my neighbors avoid unnecessary needle sticks. We've given you tons of facts so that you can make informed decisions and keep our community safe from programs all over the United States, as well as here in the state of Louisiana. So, I ask you to please keep the community in Shreveport safe.
May I ask you questions, Jim? It has been said by some, I don't necessarily subscribe to it, that having this provision or this opportunity would encourage, would encourage use. How do you view that?
I view it from just what I find on Google, like anybody can, from looking at the other agencies, even just in the world. I mean, they're even doing this, you know, in Europe and places like that, and the facts are, it has not increased. I mean, there are facts. It's evidence-based. There's facts where it reduces transmissions in different cities and for HIV and hepatitis C. And so, all I can go by, you know, is really the facts and...
I mean, everybody has an opinion, I understand, but I mean, but there's no scientific or otherwise evidence that this has been an encourager of any type of drug use.
Not anything that I have found.
I actually did a little research when they first came to me, and I found a number of cities who had added this, that there were some studies that had been done, and it did not appear that this was increasing any usage. Now, there are some other programs that are a little more extreme than this, you know, they're modeled a little differently, but to those of us who don't deal with this a lot, it may sound a little similar on the surface, that weren't as, you couldn't say that about. But this type of program and the research that I found did not increase.
There's an efficacy here, so we'll see.
So, it was, I felt pretty good about it.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Chip Akins. I reside at 274 Prospect Street here in Shreveport. That's in the Highland area. Madam Mayor, Council, Chairman, and especially Jeff, I want to thank you, and ladies and gentlemen. Most opiate addictions begin innocently enough. I, as you can tell, came through with a cane and a rather large brace on. The last time you saw me, I was not in this condition. I had major back surgery on October 1st, and so I have had to use opiates to control my pain. So, I would have to say, on that note, that but for the grace of God, there go I, or there go you, any of us could fall into an opiate addiction. Offering new syringes for old ones has yet to be shown to increase drug use. And I will give an example. In New York City, the rate of new HIV infections among drug users fell 80% after the city implemented syringe exchange programs, and the cost savings from such programs have been enormous. A new syringe, for example, costs less than a dollar. The average lifetime cost for treating someone for HIV is around $300,000. So, syringe exchange programs protect taxpayers as well as the IV drug user. I realize we aren't New York City, but we don't want to become an Austin, Indiana either. I reject the idea that syringe exchanges are immoral. The vast majority of syringe exchange programs are not just anonymous offices where drug users pick up equipment. These programs, and this is the crux of our program here in Shreveport, these programs host support groups, link people to housing and healthcare, and they also offer testing for HIV and STIs. For drug users accustomed to the daily rejection by their family, friends, and society... For drug users accustomed to the daily rejection by their family, friends, and society, syringe exchanges are often the last outpost of acceptance, the only places where they can recover their dignity. The added bonus, as, as my coworker just mentioned, is getting used needles off the street of Shreveport. Users themselves have told us through anonymous, uh, questionnaires we handed out, that a lot of them simply toss their used needles out the windows of their cars, they're driving down the road. So we have needles along our roads. So I would ask you to keep these things in mind today as you cast your vote, because we all want the same things. I believe we all want an opportunity to build a good life, a safe place to raise our families, and I believe in Shreveport. I believe the people here, that the people here, we must do everything in our power to see that no one is left behind. This program is a step forward for our city, and I believe you will do the right thing by voting yes, because it's the right thing to do for IV drug users, the taxpayers, and the public safety by allowing this program to move forward. Thank you.
Here, Chip. Okay. Uh, Mr. S-- all good? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, 71101. I spoke on this about three weeks ago, and I still believe it's a wonderful idea. Contacting Union Pacific and other parties who are interested, as well as myself, having the engineer and the director of Public Works start the process of reopening vehicular access from Lake to Commerce Street and to Cyborg Discovery Center. I still love it. I still support this very much, and I'm not changing my mind about it either. Also, to reopening vehicular access to cross over the Lake Street Railroad grade crossing just as well, I still support that. And I'm not changing my mind about that either. And the reason is, I got a, the presentation, I held on to this since three weeks ago, which I would like to show again. And hopefully, it'll light up, I hope. At least I hope it does. Good. Okay. Anyway, the suggestion I wanted to make again, as far as the crosswalk signs that have yield on them at the corner of East Fannin and Commerce, Mylum and Commerce, East Crockett and Commerce, that has to be changed. The crosswalk signs don't have a mouth to tell people when a train's coming, and they can't speak for themselves. So that has to change. And they need to be removed immediately and have crossing gates put up like on Cato and Commerce. They don't need any touching. Those are just exactly where they belong. And I really believe that, since I did my own checking to see if this would help out a whole lot for the public safety works, I believe it really will. Have you ever seen a crosswalk sign with a mouth or a hand saying, "Stop! There's a train coming"? That's not going to happen. It's just not likely going to happen. And the thing is that if you'll do this or get this done right away, nobody else can possibly get hurt or killed. One person got his leg, I believe, removed from being emancipated because of the situation that happened over there on Lake, and we don't need any com-- I mean, we won't need any more accidents. And besides, there was a goose that I put down at the bottom. And the reason for that was, suppose that the goose was out there, which may not likely happen, but if there's a train that's coming, it might honk from either direction. The goose might say, "Honk yourself". Now, that couldn't happen, but if it does, you'll hear it from me.
Thank you, Sammy.
So, so I support it.
Okay. Noted. Mr. Chair, that's all we have for public comments, comments on agenda.
All right. Do we have any, um, any legislation to be added today?
I already asked, and they answered those nine.
None, exactly. Okay. Uh, let's continue with items to be adopted.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's one item on the consent agenda. It's Resolution 128, and a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Send it.
Second.
They're moved by Councilman, uh, Everson and second by Councilman Flurry. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into resolutions on second reading and final passage, uh, or resolutions which only require one reading. The first is Resolution 118. It states the city of Shreveport endorsements, endorsement of NIT LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program.
They're moved by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin. Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 125 authorizes a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Louisiana Departments of Veterans Affairs relative to the maintenance and operation of a Veteran Service Office pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 29 dash, I mean, colon, 260 dash 262.
Been moved by Councilman Everson and second by Councilwoman Lynch. No discussion, please vote. Carries with seven.
Resolution 126 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Carr Rigs and Ingram LLC.
Second.
An external audit.
126 has been moved by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilwoman Lynch. Is there no questions? Please vote. Um, sorry, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, on advice of the Shreveport City Attorney, I'm going to abstain.
Some of them, sir. Please vote. Motion carries with six and one abstain.
Resolution 127 amends Resolution Number 7 of 2018 to extend the expiration date prescribed in Section 16.3G of the Unified Development Code for the approval of the special use permit. So move it, Jim. Zoning case number C-102-17.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford on 127 and second by Councilman Flurry. Is there no discussion? That motion carries with five and two against.
Resolution 129 authorizes the mayor to dedicate the 1800 block of Russell Road in honor of Reverend Clarence LeVar C.L. Pennywell, Sr.
So move. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Flurry. I'm sorry, Councilman Everson. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions. Uh, Resolution Number 130 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance, acceptance of act of donation between the city and Norris Ferry Road LLC, um, for the water and sewer improvements for St. Charles Place Subdivision, Unit Number 16. Resolution 131 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of act of donation between the city and Wa-- West Lake Development LLC, uh, for the streets and drainage water and sewer improvements for Long Lake Estates, Unit 23.
Is there a motion introduced?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with six and one out of ten.
Uh, we're now into introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to November the 27th. Ordinance 115 adds new chap-- a new chapter 37 to the, uh, Code of Ordnances relative to creating a local codified register identifying the city's officially authorized, certified, and designated districts, including but not limited to cultural districts, economic districts, special taxing districts, opportunity zones, and historic districts, as well as including historic landmarks, historic landmark sites, and individually designated historic properties listed on the National Register of Historic Places in the city of Shreveport. Ordinance 116 amends the official zoning map of the Unified Development Code by establishing a general historic preservation overlay district for areas and properties as well fully identified and described herein, including properties within the boundaries of any National Register of Historic Places, listed historic district, and to also include individually NRHP listed properties falling outside of the boundaries of any NRHP listed historic district in the city of Shreveport, Louisiana. Ordinance 117 closes and abandons an alley in the Colsters subdivision, uh, at TAL 20, Shreveport, in Section 37, 37, Township 18 North, Range 14 West. Ordinance 118 amends the 2018 budget for the general fund. Those are all of the--
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Everson. Please vote. Motion carries with six and one out of ten.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into ordinances on second reading and final adoption. The first is ordinance number 79. There was a discussion yesterday about the possible postponement.
So move to postpone until, I believe that was December the 11th? Is that the date that we talked about yesterday?
Second.
I thought it would be 10.
Was it 11?
Well, it's the first meeting in December.
Okay. 11.
That's the right date?
11.
Okay.
Move to--
That's my motion.
Motion to postpone by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Flurry.
Or Everson and Flurry.
Let me ask, um, what, what are we hoping happens between now and then?
Yeah, they, um, so they've made some progress, and they have a new project manager that's been assigned to it. Um, there's some paperwork that's been filed, some of the planning has been completed. So we're starting to see some action finally, and so we, we're wanting to give a little bit more time for them to, to get some more done.
Keep the pressure on.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
It's been motioned by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Flurry. If there's no discussion, please vote. Postpone. December the 11th. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 81 will add Article 6 Needle Exchange--
Send it.
--Program to Chapter 50.
It's been moved by Councilman Everson and second by the Vice Chair. If there's no discussion, I'm sorry, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I, I needed to say that, um, this all came to us, as I understand this, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure you'll correct me, members of the council, but this came because state government said that it was okay to have a needle exchange program if this local government approved it. And so I had reservations when we first saw this, and I did some research by looking at Portland, Oregon, uh, on YouTube, and it stated there, basically, the bottom line was that you'd probably see increased needles on the street, which they had the same program in saw. But, uh, as a practicing Christian, I think it would be a mistake after looking and, uh, being against this, that if we lose one soul because of dirty needles, uh, it would not be what we would want to achieve. So even though I don't like the idea of government, uh, and I wondered about the, um, the board of pharmacy, uh, but, you know, I, as a diabetic myself, I, I go to the drugstore and buy needles, uh, every 90 days, uh, to take my insulin. And I saw, and kind of in real life, what it would be if I had to use the same needle over and over every day. So I'm going to be, uh, voting yes on this, and I appreciate Councilman Everson, uh, his patience with me and helping me to see the light. Thank you.
Well, and if I could, I just want to thank everybody for their, um, time in having this discussion. It's, you know, not a, not a fun subject, but something that I think, um, when done correctly, is going to help save lives in our community, and something worth doing. So--
I got Ms. Lynch on the board, please.
Let me ask about the funding source for this program. Who is--
I, I think I can answer it if, if they don't mind, Councilwoman Lynch, if you don't mind me--
I may have a couple of more questions.
Oh, yeah, sure. They, they may want to make their way up, but as they're making their way up, I think I could at least, um, answer. This is, so the Philadelphia Center is going to be administering this program. We are just allowing it to take, you know, we're, we're making the arrangements necessary to allow this program to take place within our city, so the city is not funding this program. But they do have, um, a set of, uh, you know, grants that go out to foundations that, um, specialize in funding programs like this. Right.
So what's the funding source for this?
Um, we're currently looking at funding sources. We were going to, of course, get the vote on this first, and then we'll be looking. There are many different funding sources, both through, uh, federal SAMSA grants, um, as well as other grants, such as through Age United. So we are looking at those now, and we'll be applying for some of those. But we will be doing it through grant funding. It could be private or public.
Okay, so this is the first step, or is it, or do you go through the CDC first? How--
Um, well, basically, it was just--
Some reading I was doing was saying, you know, you go through the CDC, and then they have to do something, and then the local--
They shouldn't have to do anything. Uh, once we get the approval, and we did not want to move forward until we got your approval and do things properly, then we will be abs-- actually submitting grants for funding. And once that funding is through, then we'll be able to implement our program.
Okay. So are you familiar with the program that's being done in Baton Rouge and New Orleans now?
We, we are.
How are they, how are they, do you know how they're being funded?
I'm not sure. Do you know?
Is it multi-year?
They are funded through, um, federal SAMSA grants, Age United, the Kaiser Family Foundation. There are numerous, numerous, um, that, uh, national organizations that actually will fund syringe access programs like this. So, and that's how they're funded also, is through these private foundation grants.
Okay. So the change in the article, I guess I'm, want to make sure, this is permanent, correct?
Yes.
It's not for a set period of time? Okay. Okay. So no city funding? You're not asking--
No, no, we're not asking for any kind of funding from the city.
Thank you so much.
Let me, let me ask a question for you, Alief. Uh, in regards to, um, making the public aware, what, what means, are you, you have some current clients, I'm sure, that would participate. Is there any other mechanism that you're going to alert the community of, of this needle exchange program?
Well, we will most likely, and I'll let others join in. Um, a lot of it will be through our own outreach that we perform--
Okay.
--as well as the clients that come in for our testing services through wellness. We have cooperative, um, efforts underway with the Center for Addictive Disorders and, um, the clinics around town. So we will be interfacing with those, also with other coalitions, with Hope Connections, and other community organizations to get this out. There are a lot of word of mouth.
Uh, uh, was it--
Yes, sir.
That's what I was going to add, is the advocacy person for the center. This is more of a word-of-mouth situation where we are looking at, at addicts that would, that would come into the program. This is not something we're going to be putting up billboards for and advertising for. This is something that's done for the comfort of the, the drug user. We want them to feel comfortable coming in. So this is something that's not going to be publicized to the extent that some of our other programs would be, for that reason.
But they already have overlapping networks.
No, I'm just saying, when, when something of this, um, benefit happens, there's a certain clientele or market that it attracts, and, and, and once the word get out, the word is out, you know? And I think that's going to be a benefit to you. So at this point, there's no funding source. What would be your targeted implementation date?
We're hoping, I'm estimating approximately six months--
Six to nine months.
--to implement. And for the record, this is Hershey Krippendorf, our Director of Development.
Okay.
Wonderful person. And I'm Chris Michoto, the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Center.
So what, what degree of funding would you like to have before you implement it? A year, two years? How much of, so that it could be a continuous service?
A majority of these grants that we will be applying for are typically, um, two-to-three year grants.
Okay.
And so there will be, you know, there'll be some meat on the bones as far as funding goes, but we are still in the early works of, of getting our budget together to, um, for this particular program, you know, and making sure that we have, you know, enough for the syringes and, you know, um, personnel, you know, any liability insurance that is, that has to go in doing a program like this. So we're hoping to have, you know, two to three years of funding upfront, so.
And, and lastly, let me, let me thank Councilman Flurry-- And lastly, let me, let me thank Councilman Flurry for his, his words, it was very inspiring. So if you will, when you are ready to implement, will you, somebody, could I just come back down and alert us that we have funded? We will be-
Of course, we'd be happy to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I had Vice Chair Jenkins and then Councilwoman Lynch right after.
No, no, I, I was essentially going to point out that the city is not the funding organization, nor is it the facilitating organization. It is acting in a legislative authority exclusively in this case, and there's a little confusion out there, at least in what some people have read in the papers, so I do think it's important that that is out there in the public domain specifically. So that's all I was asking.
Councilwoman Lynch.
I wanted to ask, okay, so currently, from the city attorney, what, what is the criminalizing factor with the needles now that we're decriminalizing?
Uh, well, I guess it would be possession of the, the actual needle itself, the drug paraphernalia, thank you.
Okay, so that would be, so now that's a, a charge, right? If you have a needle on you and the police?
Correct.
Okay. And so this, I think I saw you have a card or something?
Okay, I think you're saying a different thing that she's asking here, because it's the needle exchange program that's being allowed-
Criminalized, right.
-to get around this-
Drug paraphernalia.
Drug paraphernalia. But we're not, we're not changing the law on drug paraphernalia.
Right, no, it's still illegal to have drug paraphernalia on your person.
Right, but this says something about decriminalizing, so that's why I'm trying to make sure.
Because they'll be able to have, I mean, it's spelled out.
If you have this card, yeah, I want, I'm just, some of these questions I'm asking for the benefit of the public. And so if you have this card-
Correct.
-on you-
Correct.
And you have a needle-
Correct.
-from the program, but you have some kind of drug.
It, it's still unlawful to have the drug.
It's still unlawful to have the drug.
Right.
But the, but the charge associated with the needle.
The clean needle, correct.
Clean needle.
That's correct. There is no, it, it, it allows, this legislation functionally allows the Philadelphia Center or its appropriate designee, really the Philadelphia Center in this matter, to host a needle exchange program without criminal risk to them participating in the exchange of dirty needles. It does not advocate the rights and responsibilities of the citizen to be a law-abiding citizen.
So as long as the tape is over the cup, basically?
Right.
Okay.
That's a good way to put it.
You know, I have to get an example I can relate to, but, okay, gotcha, thank you.
That is. We adopt it? Is that it? Eighty-seven. I didn't vote? Jenkins.
I mean, validated, it is highlighted, and it is, it is.
Okay, sorry, motion carries with seven.
Ordinance eighty-seven amends various articles and sections in the Unified Development Code. There is one amendment that replaces the entire ordinance and all of the exhibits. That's amendment number one.
So moved on amendment one.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin. Amendment. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
So moved as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Everson and second by Councilman Corbin, so moved as amended. Motion carries with seven. Councilman Bradford.
I'm sorry?
Is that O?
Yeah.
We're now to ordinance eighty-nine. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's a zoning ordinance. It amends, it rezones property located on the north side of Westford Coons Industrial Loop, approximately three hundred and twenty-five feet east of Southwood Drive, from C-three General Commercial District to C-four Heavy Commercial District.
So moved.
Second.
Removed by Councilman Flurry and second by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one-ten is a zoning matter, case number C dash fifty-nine dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the west side of Mansfield Road, seven hundred and ninety feet north of Hollywood Avenue from C-two to I-one Light Industrial District.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Lynch and second by Councilman Everson. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one-eleven is a zoning matter, case number C dash sixty-one dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the west side of Airport Drive, approximately two thousand eight hundred feet south of Reverse Drive, from C-four Heavy Commercial District to I-two Heavy Industrial District.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford and second by Councilman Flurry. No discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one-twelve is a zoning matter, case number C dash sixty-two dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the northwest corner of Bird Coons Industrial Loop and Southwood Drive, from R-one-seven Single Family Residential District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District.
So moved.
Removed by Councilman Flurry and second by the Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one-thirteen is a zoning matter, case number C dash seventy-one dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the west side of Elbe Road at Chinkypin Drive, at the Chinkypin Drive intersection, from R-one-seven Single Family Residential District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance one-fourteen is a zoning matter, case number C dash seventy-two dash eighteen. It rezones property located on the west side of Elbe Road at the intersection of Elbe Gardens Boulevard, from C-one Neighborhood Commercial District to C-three General Commercial District.
So moved. Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Corbin and second by the Vice Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter to be removed from the table legislation on the agenda.
Have we made any progress on ordinance seventy-five? The encroachment issue? Is that administration?
We can, we can look it up and get something to you, Councilman.
But if we need to take it off between down the end of the year that's finished.
Okay, we'll get some information on it.
Of course, as our city attorney reminded us yesterday, they all fall off, right? It's during the year.
No property standards appeal, no other appeals. Any reports from Officer Bullock?
Yes, sir. Ms. Stewart has told me that if I don't call a meeting of the Audit and Finance Committee, I'll have to leave the council, so.
She's giving you six weeks, too. Let me guess.
So we will have an Audit and Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, at one-thirty P.M. to review all of the outstanding audits that have been completed. And I'd like to pull counsel to your end.
All right. Councilman Jenkins.
All right, and it, uh-
Just poised for the clerk's report is all that I am, I'm just ready.
Mr. Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on our discussion yesterday concerning the second regular meeting in December, and after looking at the, at the law, I think it's better if the council would make a motion, so I have a recommendation. Because of the regular council meetings that are generally scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, and the administrative conference is held the Monday before each regular meeting, and because the fourth Monday and Tuesday in December, or December the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and based on the discussion yesterday, the council could consider a motion as follows, to move that the second administrative conference and the second regular council meeting in December be combined and held on Thursday, December the twentieth, twenty-eighteen, at three P.M., and that notice of the change be given in the manner required for special meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Jenkins and second by Councilwoman Lynch. If there's no discussion on those dates, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ray Kirk.
Mr. Chairman, that's my report. I tried to put in enough words to satisfy Mr. Jenkins.
By the way, it doesn't mean you get a waiver for the next time. You don't get, it's a minimum, and then any more is just bonus for the rest, just to be clear.
Do we have any additional communications from the mayor's office?
No, thank you.
Does any council member have any additional communications? On you now.
All righty, I want to recognize the Councilman-elect for District F, who is with us here today, Councilman-elect James Green. Come on up, Mr. Green. This is not a, a room that's unfamiliar to him, having served two separate times on the council, representing District F. I just want to publicly say congratulations, and that you certainly, you know, as we've worked together in the past, will continue to do so. I want people to, to know that, that we've worked together quite well-
Yes.
-in the past, and that we will do so going forward. So I look forward to, to continuing to work with you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you all. I didn't know I was going to come up, I would have had my suit on, but, but thank you, Mayor, and everybody, God bless you, and thank you, Stephanie, for giving me the opportunity to come. May God bless you.
If I don't, as a, just as a follow-up to that, and my friends and people that are close to me know a little bit more, and I don't want to say too much, but I certainly want to thank my constituents for the fourteen years that I have served in public office. I'm very much looking forward to having a normal life. It's been a long time. I don't think I'll have that much of an adjustment to make, because I'm definitely looking forward to it, but it certainly has been an honor and a privilege, and I'm in no way unhappy about the results of the election. I'm living my best life, and so I'm going to continue to do that, and I'm going to work with Councilman, Councilman Green. I've said to other members of the community, it's in the best interest to work with your councilperson, regardless of, you know, who you support it, it's, you know, we're here to serve. And so I want to say congratulations to him again, and to the community at large, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Is that the end of politics for you, Councilwoman Lynch?
Never say never, too.
I'm done.
Okay, Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss if I did not express to the mayor, first, her hospitality and generosity she gave to Ambassador Andrew Young. He came to town to be a part of the Living Legends Gala for Dr. Seals Simpkins. She presented him with the key to the city, as well as designating Saturday, November the third as Dr. Seals Simpkins Day in Shreveport. It was well attended, and I think a lot of people was really pleased that, that time had finally come, that the city, and that the coalition would, would honor him in such a way. I thought it was, I thought it was intriguing that after Harry Blake wanted to set the record straight, and he made a motion, and I don't think it was accepted that, that Dr. Seals Simpkins would be the, the true father of civil rights in Shreveport. And Andrew Young seconded motion, everybody in the audience said aye, so I don't know if that, if that has any, any real appeal to it, but, but anyway, it was a great event, and, and Dr. Ambassador Young was very happy to meet the mayor and, and receive the key to the city, but I thought it was a very good event all, all the way around, and those who attended, I appreciate that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And those that purchased tables and tickets, it was, it was really well attended.
Okay, all right. I had something real quick that I was late, and I apologize for that, I had a meeting. I'm looking at, on the, earlier when we were speaking about Chief Crump, so on his medical, is it medical leave or retirement, which one?
It's on medical leave.
It's medical leave, okay.
And I did send you, Mr. Chairman, I did send an email as quickly as I could, after I had to gather people together to choose a substitute chief.
Okay, and that was the email by Chief Crump to you all, right?
Chief Crump sent me an email. Late yesterday, while we were in council meeting, and I forwarded that email to you all.
Right.
And then I had a conversation with him and asked him, you know, about it, and I needed to have documentation from his doctor, because I was, didn't know he was going on medical leave. He had announced he was going to retire. He had not given me anything in writing, and I said that to you all last, the last time we talked, I did tell you that he didn't give me anything in writing, last Friday, so I was still waiting for that and had not gotten it. And after I pressed him for something in writing, he sent me something yesterday, after I left the office coming to council meeting, and I forwarded to you so you could see the timing.
Okay, but prior to that, that was the first time that you had spoke to him about either or?
About his medical retirement?
Yeah, or retirement or leave, whichever one, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I need to know which question, Councilman.
I'm saying, so prior to that, that was the first time that you had spoke to him about his medical leave or retirement, his retirement?
On Friday, he spoke to me about retirement.
Okay.
I had to call him, because he had spoken to his command, and I'm, I'm repeating myself, but I'll, I'll do that.
Please.
He, he told his command staff he was going to retire. We had had conversation prior to Friday about, you know, his, the perception in the community, and, you know, he was going to make some decision about his future, and he did not inform me before he informed, you know, at his meeting on Friday morning. And then I got the call, and I called him and asked him to tell me what was going on. And that's when he told me he was going to retire November fifteenth, and by that time, media had it, so I told you what I knew. And then I told him I needed something in writing, because I didn't have anything in writing from him. And he told me he would get me something in writing. Well, the weekend passed, I still hadn't gotten anything, so I called him Monday and asked him to send me something in writing. I, you know, what's in writing is what's legal.
Right.
And so he sent me something, Mr. Bowman, and that's just the fact of it, and he sent that to me yesterday afternoon after I left the office, and, you know, what he sent was not what he told us.
Right.
So.
That's what I'm trying to decipher, too, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay, so, and attorney, you hadn't spoke to him either, right?
I speak to him all the time.
You had spoke to him about his retirement or his medical leave?
I spoke to him on, it's always been Friday.
About his retirement?
Again, he's, just like you all, he's a client of mine, I've spoken to him.
About his retirement?
I've had, I've had this- I've had discussions with him both on retirement and on medical leave. Yes, sir.
All right. No advisement, though, just talking?
Uh, just talking.
So moving forward on the, on the chief that we have now, the substitute chief. So with him doing chief duties, then he'll be taking chief pay?
That's correct.
He is serving as the chief of police.
Right, just making sure that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. That's what civil service law says.
Right, okay. That's it, that's all I had. Thank you. Does any council member have any, any other communication?
I had one question, if I could, please, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, the reason you were warning at in writing, because that's the civil service rule, right?
Well, he has to, there's a process. He has to tell us in writing if he's retiring, and he has to fill out the paperwork. I had not seen anything from him in writing. And I kept saying to everybody, I haven't seen anything in writing. And so when I asked, and I pressed him for something, that's what he sent me yesterday afternoon.
All right, we down to public comments?
We are down to public comments. Mr. Try the, try the lower mic. That might.
Cedric, the mic right in front of you.
Need some help, Mr. Murphy?
I got it, I got it.
Okay, first of all.
Bring it closer to you, Mr. Murphy.
Where?
Bring the mic closer to you.
Okay.
That one, yes, sir. You got it?
Yeah, okay.
Perfect, thank you. First of all.
State your name and your address, please.
My name is Cedric Murphy. My address is 2744 Murphy Street, and I'm in District G. First of all, I would like to thank the mayor, Mr. Bradford, Ms. Lynch, Mr. Bowman, and Mr. William Bradford for your assistance on some recent projects. And especially the mayor for starting the Mayor's Advisory Council for people with disabilities. My concern is disability inclusion. I don't feel, and I'm not seeing where people with disabilities are involved in policies, events, news, awareness, any type. And I live here. I received a ticket for not walking on the sidewalk. I was discharged from a nursing home to an abandoned building. And some of the public service people are just rude. So all I'm asking is that somehow we please work on in our districts and communication and policy to include people with disabilities. I know we're going in the right direction, because the mayor did what she did with the council, so I know we have a chance. But I'm just asking you, think about it. Obstacles for us to get from point A to point B, you guys know nothing about. You can walk over cars, you can walk over piles, you can walk over anything that's unaccessible. Accessible to you guys, but it's unaccessible to me. And I'm just hoping we can go forward. I'm an advocate. I also would like to apologize if I've offended anybody, or if I sent too many emails. But as an advocate, you fight. You have a passion, and with that passion, it involves anything you can do to get to points that you need to share and hopefully get assistance. My second thing is disability people have $175 billion of disposable assets. We shop, we use the internet, and we spend money here. But I would like to be able to get to Walmart, so I can spend the money. Once again, I'm talking about accessibility. The third thing I had was, I didn't have a chance to ask, but what is the ordinance? Or what is the ruling for people walking in the streets? Since it is a law not to walk in the streets, what is the ordinance on what we're supposed to do when the sidewalk is unaccessible? Is there ordinance, or is this something that we're working on? Is it something that you guys know about, to whereas if there is a wheelchair allowance? Or is there something that a person can do who can access the sidewalk? I'm asking.
I believe there was some discussion about it a few years ago. I don't know the full extent of that. I do think that there were, I mean, I know that there are some efforts being made. For instance, a lot of the sidewalk projects are adding some ramps and things in an effort to make the sidewalks more accessible to people who might be in a wheelchair or may have a disability. But I think you're absolutely right to suggest that more discussion is needed, you know? I mean, I think there are efforts being taken to improve that situation. But we can always stand to hear more from people who see a situation a little differently than we may hear, you know? I mean, we, we may do our best to be sensitive to a challenge, but we, we don't live that challenge, and, and you do. So we appreciate you being here and taking the time to kind of reach out to us. And that's what it's gonna take for us to kind of move this discussion along. But efforts have been made, and there are some considerations that have been given, but I think there's room for more.
But now we still can't get a ticket by being in the street when the sidewalk is unaccessible?
I think in certain situations, that's the case. I mean, I do recall, certainly in my district, I know there was a tragic situation a number of years ago where, and I think this was probably before your time, Mayor Tyler, this is probably in Mayor Glover's term, but there was a constituent that was in my district who I knew, and lots of people knew. She often wrote her, her motorized.
On Crestwell?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, and that was, you know, very tragic that she was hit and, and succumbed to the wounds from that, that accident. So I think that there was some, you know, during that time, I think there was some discussion. I mean, there is some need to try to help make sure that people don't go in places that are unsafe for them to be traveling. But there is also that need to provide access to a safer route, you know? So I think that's one of the reasons that the city has been relatively aggressive about trying to add ramps, trying to add access points, trying to repair some sidewalks. And so, you know, that is something that's been taking place. And that's one answer, but that's probably not the only answer. So it's helpful for you to be here to, to kind of talk with us about what would help. What are some things that we think might, might add, keep the safety and protections there to direct people to the safest places to travel? But also, you know, how we might be able to consider those situations that don't fit within that? You know, sometimes we write a law based on a set of situations that, that, you know, sometimes those situations might be different. And we need to know what those differences are, those distinctions are, so we can, we can refine that law to best reflect all the possible situations.
I'm hoping that the Mayor's Advisory Council can address those and bring recommendations. And I forgot to say, thank you, Mr. Crawford. You helped me out.
Thank you. Thank you for the education.
We're going forward, and I was concerned about the word walkable in your 2030 plan and your economic plan. But walkable does include people with wheelchairs. So we are involved, and we are here. And I just want to take the time to say thank you, guys. And we are going forward. Shreveport's going forward, and Shreveport's growing. But just remember, $175 billion in disposable assets. We could use that money here, guys. But once again, thank you, guys, and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
I have Councilwoman Lynch, who want to address?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And, you know, now that I'm leaving, you can keep sending emails, because I don't want them to miss getting a lot of emails. So keep that up. But certainly, thank you. I think the, the reactivation of the, of the Advisory Council is gonna be helpful. And so, you know, we're not gonna really solve anything today in terms of what you're talking about. But that council providing those recommendations and making administration and council aware of the issues that you face every day. I mean, I had a little situation last year. And Mayor, they were laughing at me, because I was dancing at the, at the, at the conference. But they didn't know that last year, I couldn't even walk. I was, I was, I couldn't even get out the bed.
Right.
And so, you know, a year later to be able to dance, I was, you know, happy, thank God. But, but even when I was campaigning this time, because of, you know, I mean, I still have some challenges with it. I didn't know how many people had steps leading up to their front doors in this town. You know, and, and when you fall in, and you don't want to do that again, you know, you're very careful. You know, I mean, it was a situation, you know, particularly in one area I was in. I think it looked like every house had steps. And so I'm moving a whole lot slower, because I don't want to, you know, have another incident. And, and so I'm more cognizant, is what I'm saying. I'm more cognizant of, of the barriers, of things not being, you know, where they were, you know, how I was a, a year ago, it didn't even faze me. But now, every step I take, I have to, you know, look at and pay attention. And so things, so I do have an appreciation for what you're saying. And I think that it will be helpful, very helpful, as we consider, you know, whether that's, you know, people, needle exchange programs for people that have drug issues. You know, where we put special bike lanes in for people who want to, you know, travel that route. I mean, there are so many diversities to our community.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and the disabled, permanently disabled community has a, has a right to have a seat at the table.
Yes, ma'am.
And how our city is laid out. And how it's made so that everyone can have the same quality of life. So I certainly appreciate what you all are doing. And just keep it up, and, and I'm sure that the council, the next council will be very interested in having those recommendations from the Advisory Council.
They're saying that 70% of people will eventually have disabilities.
Right.
You know, so it's just something, and we have seniors here.
Correct.
The police are concerned that a senior got robbed. And, you know, that's, that's something that they're working with to make sure seniors are safe.
Right, right. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Bradford?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Murphy, and thank you for your persistency in, in taking up this, this, this cause.
Yes, sir.
You, you saw, you saw an image on social media, and you immediately inboxed me. And that, that image was, at the gala that I mentioned earlier, you saw Dr. Ceele Simkins and Ambassador Andrew Young in wheelchairs.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, yes, sir.
And you said, wow, look at this. And, and, and the reason that that struck me is that I picked up Andrew Young at the airport. When he left Atlanta, we got to Shreveport, until he got into a vehicle, accommodations was made for his disability.
Great.
Okay. Accommodation was made for Dr. Simkins' disability. From the time he got at the convention center till the time he came off the stage.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, I said, I also said that if, if accommodations could be made for those, it should be made for the ordinary citizen.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
The difference, and, and Councilwoman Lynch mentioned about the bike path, and everything, everything basically that happens, happens through advocacy.
Yes.
People advocate for what they want. And I'm trusting that the Advisory Council, the mayor has established, and that others who also share your, your, your condition, your disabilities, would, would advocate, will, will create a presence in this city that will, that will move us to the same degree that people that want a bike path would, would get us to.
Yes, sir.
And, 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 but you have been persistent. Like I say, all of us get your emails. And, and I don't know, and maybe somebody could answer the question. I don't know if somebody would be cited for being in the streets if the sidewalk is unaccessible.
I received a ticket.
You got a ticket for being in the streets and the sidewalk was unaccessible?
Yes, sir.
Okay, was that recently?
I got the ticket in 2014. In 2015, the Shreveport Times was doing an article on African-Americans being profiled. Because out of the 300 tickets that were received in 2011, 283 were black. So they, so it, it was in 2015. I got the ticket in 2014. It was in 2015. I submitted a complaint. The report said that the policy had, was, the, the policy had failed, and that that caused the incident, but there was no follow-up. But right now, I'm, I get scared sometimes, because, you know, that question wasn't answered. But I got a ticket, man.
Well, we'll look at that, because again, if that's, if that's the case in, in, in the area that you live in, I know, because it's adjacent to my district, that there's a lot of unaccessible sidewalking. So we'll look at that, and if we have to do some type of legislation to, to, to modify something in regards to a person like you who, who cannot avoid going out into the streets for that purpose of traveling. We'll look at that. One other question I want to ask before you leave. Now, you sent me a image in front of your house where the sidewalk had collapsed. Had that been addressed?
Um, I submitted a concern, yourself and Brian, Mr. Crawford, immediately, that on a Friday, I submitted it, on that Monday, and Ms. Lynch, you helped also. A couple of people came out, and the guy said that they're trying to see whether or not the city is responsible, or DOTD, LA DOTD is responsible. But it hasn't been, it hasn't been fixed yet. So there is still a pothole in front of my house.
I mean, the mayor's listening, so I'm sure she's gonna follow up with you on that.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And, and let me just say this, when we're made aware, we do, and we have been going around the city addressing, and I think you know this, and we've, we've, we've told you this, addressing ADA issues. And we've done a lot of sidewalks. But whenever we know about one, like in your case, we take care of it. Now, I didn't, this is the first time I heard that it wasn't taken care of. But we're going to, you know, we're gonna relook at that. Because we have done a lot, and I'm gonna ask Attorney Bradford to just kind of weigh in on it. Because we've spent a lot of money addressing ADA issues in the city since I've been in office now. I, you know, I wasn't responsible for the 2014 incident. But from 2015 on, I can tell you, we have put resources toward trying to make sure. I'm, I'm used to working with children with disabilities. And so we've made a concerted effort to make sure that we can address many of the issues. We don't have the funding to do them all at one time, but we are working on them. From, you know, sidewalks, streets, you know.
ADA building access.
Building access, we've done a lot with that. Transportation, you know, we, we send that lift line out there to get you. Anytime you need to go to the hospital or wherever you need to go. We've done a lot in the past four years to address a lot of those issues. We haven't finished addressing all of them, but we're going to, working on, I mean, we're gonna get there.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a process. Attorney Bradford, can you kind of share a little bit more, because I've worked through your office to make sure that we could address those issues?
Yes, ma'am, and as they come up, we have a disability ADA coordinator and a ADA assistant coordinator that we're working with now. We're currently filling that as a permanent position through the Office of City Attorney in cooperation with risk management. We're working closely with the Disabilities Advocates Council and working to make sure that anytime those issues arise, that, you know, if they're emergent, we address them immediately. If they are, Mr. Murphy's very good about sending us different streets and issues that may arise. And, and we see if they're currently programmed into a street repair, or sidewalk replacement in order to address that issue, and we try and address it in the most efficient method possible. We also working with Sportran to ensure that we're improving the quality of service that they're providing for individuals who may need certain accommodations as well. And so between that, and as well as our street and sidewalk efforts, we're continuing to try and improve the ADA compliance throughout the city of Shreveport.
And we do building. I mean, we've done a lot of building. Anytime we go in and renovate a building, we make it ADA accessible. I mean, we've done that on the 20, the 26th building.
On the twenty, the twenty-six buildings that we have worked on, we make sure that we could put in those accommodations for persons with disabilities. So we've spent a lot so far, but there's a lot more to do.
Yes, ma'am.
There's more to do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. You have no reason to be apologetic about the emails. I know there was some confusion on one, but I think we got that straight, so I appreciate you and what you're doing for those with disabilities, so I appreciate the emails, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Guys, have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one, Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana seven-one-one-oh-one. Please mark on your calendar or calendars for December fifth, December twelfth, and December nineteenth at eleven a.m. at the Church of the Holy Cross, as they'll be having once again a three Wednesday soup lunch with dessert, ice water, and coffee for five dollars during the Advent season. They enjoy doing this each year, and they like people to even come out, even the city council who have been there for soup, dessert, ice water, and coffee. Anyone who hasn't been there has been missing something really good. There are a few of you who have been there, that you've been coming, and you've been more than welcomed, and if you haven't been there, you really need to come, because I know that everyone should like soup.
And desserts.
And the dessert, and the ice water and coffee. Jeff, it's right up your alley, along with James and Willie, because I know you three too well. Well, Steph, you hadn't been there, you should be there.
You should join us, Steph.
What is keeping you from coming?
Yeah. Get right there.
James and I are going to come.
That's what I think would do it, because I already left him a message to see about coming, and hopefully you'll both come. Anyway, also to say, it's December fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth at eleven a.m., it's only five dollars. It's the Church of the Holy Cross, and you'll love it. Now, from the normal to the most ridiculous. I saw Alf recently, I was on television, and he had a sunburn on his snout, and Kate said, Alf, would you let me please put cold cream on that for you since it's burned? He said, one scoop, I'm on a diet. And she said, Alf, I said cold cream, not ice cream. And I think that somebody just didn't hear too good, or he's just a wacko. I go with a wacko. And also, it makes me remember something that happened years ago when I asked one girl, did you see an orange lazy Susan missing? And she said, who's Lady Susan? Is she a lady? I said, no. I said, a lazy Susan. She said, they moved.
All right, if there's nothing else, this means adjourned.